Folder, and if you need a listening device, Ken is in the front row and he could help you with that. Mr. Letts, are you ready?
I'm ready. Under the routine business, the first order would be to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a motion for the agenda?
No move, second.
I have a motion, a second. Any additions or corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Second item of business would be to approve the county commission minutes from 1:06 2015.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval, second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes. Are there any corrections? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Third item of business would be bills to be paid in the amount of $340,479.38.
Pay the bills.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any comments on the bills? Fairly small week. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Fourth item would be reports, the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Department report for December 2014.
Is on file, that's all.
That's on file. That's over by Dick there, should you care to read it. Personnel actions, Kerry Deaver would consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Is there a motion on routine action?
So moved, second.
I have a motion, a second. Any questions for HR? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Applications for abatement, Mr. Kyle Hellseth?
Number seven.
Nothing. Notice and requests. We have a notice from Sioux, the Sioux Empire Safety Village, of their intent to conduct a fundraising raffle on March 5th, 2015 at Vance Thompson Vision, 3101 West 57th Street in Sioux Falls.
And that's just a notice. Number eight.
That's what we do. Okay. Eighth, planning and notices, there are none. And on item number nine, we have a petition for the compromise of lien, DPNO 70625, for the amount of $1,420. And Mr. Commissioner Barth is going to handle that today.
Fellow commissioners, we've received a request for a compromise of lien, DPNO 70625, in the amount of $1,420. It's in the name of the applicant and his ex-wife. The applicant is asking for a compromise and release of lien in full with no payment. The applicant is in the process of refinancing a home he purchased on contract for deed, and he has to resolve this prior to closing. The closing date will be set after this lien is satisfied. And we've got some estimates on the cost there. They were married in 2002, divorced in 2011. They were separated but still married at the time county services were provided to the now ex-wife. According to this application, the party has sole custody of his daughter and is employed full-time. He's got assets of $120,000, including a home, two older model vehicles, and some investments. His liabilities are $176,000-plus. And while his income for 2014 appears to be $44,000, basically $45,000, his income for 2013 was $30,000. So again, they're requesting a compromise in full with no payment. We've gotten a note from Human Services suggesting that we take the applicant off of this lien and leave it, the in-effect loan, towards his now ex-wife. And I will make a motion to do that.
Is there a second?
I'll second it for conversation. I have a question.
Commissioner Barth, Benega, excuse me.
Kirsten, do we know from the divorce decree if there was any discussion about how this was going to be split?
I don't believe there was any discussion about that. And as far as expenses that arise in the course between separation and divorce, you know, technically you have a duty to support your spouse until it's finalized. However, you can consider this request out of equity sake, out of fairness as well. But as a legal matter, I can't say there's no duty to support, you know, depending on the timing.
Thank you.
Yep.
My understanding from this paper that's in front of us, and maybe Ken can shed a little light on it, it looks to me like there were some additional payments made on this that were not on our original document. Did you see this, Ken?
I did not.
You know, in looking at this, Madam Chair, I'm not sure if they were additional payments or additional assistance in another county for...
I have a motion and a second to release completely the...
The lien against the...
The applicant and leave it against...
And leave it against the ex-spouse.
Are there any other questions or comments? Yes. Ken, can you shed a little light on this?
No. If you're going to take steps in action, because I can see this coming down the pike, if you're going to take an action to remove her name from the lien, which is... Or his name from the lien, which I'm not, I think is fine, and that you may also want to take an action to release this lien specifically against the real estate so it doesn't horse up their refinancing.
I see the State's Attorney nodding in agreement, so that...
Correct.
I would revise my second, my motion to that. Mr. Benega?
Oh, well, second then.
That leaves the total amount against the wife, the ex-wife, in this. As these were her charges, they didn't have anything to do with him. Are there any other questions? I have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. This is a time for public comment. If there's anyone who would like to speak on anything that's not on the agenda, you just come forward and state your name and address. Seeing none, we can move on. Oh, sorry, yep, go ahead, just give your name and your address, please.
Yes, my name's Matt Walls. I live at 4401 South Lewis Avenue in Sioux Falls. I'm here just as a private citizen and resident of Minnehaha County. And I'd like to just continue to encourage County Commission to continue to look at new sources of revenue, specifically in terms of what I would call an alcohol user fee or alcohol impact fee. Traditionally, we refer to it as an alcohol tax. Taxes are typically seen as things that apply universally, sales tax, property tax, income tax, we all pay them. A fee is something that's borne by particular activities or people or products. And in that case, continuing to look at or being open to raising alcohol fees or user fees is a good idea, I believe. I'd love to see, especially for the state, I would love to see for the state, give the counties the jurisdictional authority to raise an alcohol impact fee. Currently, there are 20 states that allow local municipalities and local authorities to raise fees from alcohol, specifically to go to their local counties and cities. South Dakota currently is not one of them. It'd be great if we were. Interestingly enough, North Dakota does allow this. North Dakota allows municipalities to raise up to 7% as an add-on tax or additional sales tax on alcohol in North Dakota. So in Bismarck, if I go and buy a $3 beer, I'm going to pay an additional 7 cents, or 7%, about 21 cents in Bismarck, for example. It works really well when those additional alcohol impact fees are tied to expenses that a county would incur. And currently, I know the county incurs quite a bit of expense due to alcohol substance abuse. Would love to see some of that, that's just a quid pro quo, helping to mitigate the effects that we already see. Personally, as a resident of Minnehaha County and of South Dakota, I'd love to see South Dakota producers of alcohol, beer, wine, and spirits be exempted from such a fee. That way, if people complain, viewers, I don't want to pay that additional alcohol impact fee. Well, you don't have to, you can buy South Dakota-produced products and taste better and it's better for the local economy. Anyway, I wanted to thank you for allowing me this opportunity to encourage your support in such a position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walls. Any other public comment? So on to regular business.
Okay, items under regular business. Number 10, we have a briefing on the 2015 Commission Liaison Assignments and Consider Motion for County Commission Appointments to the following boards and councils.
Okay. So the liaison positions were assigned this past week, and you have them in your packet. They're also on the end of the folder if anyone else wants to look at them. If you have any concerns or would like to discuss the positions that you've been giving, I'm, you know, open to a discussion or whatever you need. But we do have a few that need to be approved, and I will read them. And if you'd like, we could just make one motion to cover them all. We have Metro Communications, Commissioner Benega and Commissioner Kelly. South Dakota Association for County Commissioners Board of Director and Alternative, alternate is Commissioner Barth and myself as the alternate. The Sioux Empire Housing Partnership is myself. Multicultural Center Intergovernmental Board would be Commissioner Barth and Commissioner Kelly. And the CCOG Urbanization Development Commission is Commissioner Barth, Commissioner Kelly, and the new appointment. Are there any questions or comments on the new assignments?
I'd make a motion to approve those. Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the liaison positions. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item number 11 would be a presentation of requests by Split Rock Township officials concerning assistance or acceptance of responsibility for that portion of Maple Street that is east of Six Mile Road and Split Rock Township. Split Rock Township will be doing the presentations.
If you would just identify yourself and your address, please.
Yes, Dennis Horner, Split Rock Township Superboarders Supervisors, 1604 South Schaefer Drive, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Thank you for the opportunity to visit with you today in regards to safety concerns on the road here in Split Rock Township. Split Rock Township Supervisors and Minnehaha County Superintendent Mr. Boothy have received numerous calls regarding Maple Street between Six Mile Road, east to the bridge over the Big Sioux River, joining Park Street in Brandon, South Dakota. Park Street, as you know, passes through, past the entrance of the Big Sioux Recreation Area, entrance to the Brandon Valley Robert Bennett Elementary School, and the new intermediate school. Patron concerns are for safety due to the increased traffic, existing road is very hilly, many steep ditches, numerous trees in the area causing a limited line of sight. Road is currently a township road, being a gravel surface posted to the speed limit of 30 miles an hour. Township maintains the road of the good quality of gravel, which is required by the State Spec. It is, and also has a chloride solution for dust control and provides maintenance to the road as needed. Request of the patrons in the area has been asked petition of Minnehaha County Commission to secure funds to regrade and hard-surface Maple Street through state or federal funding. Extension of Highway 100 to Interstate 90 will also increase traffic to the area. There's going to be a letting to extend Highway 100 between Madison Street and Maple Street this year pending a letting in March 2015. On October 23rd, 2014, Split Rock Township met with Mr. Boothy, Mr. Benega, and Mr. McFarland and others to discuss Maple Street. Mr. Boothy suggested that we contact LTAP, which is a group of South Dakota State University, to discuss the possibility of applying an otter seal to this hard-surfaced road. The, October 29th, 2014, the LTAP people met with us on Maple Street and said that the otter seal was not recommended because of the hills of the road. They also stated that due to the conditions that we were using an excellent quality of gravel and the treatment of chloride for dust control was what they would recommend until the road could be rebuilt and hard-surfaced. A packet that we printed to you is petition to the Minnehaha County Commission from, in Split Rock Township regarding East Maple Street identifying the property owners and addresses and their carpool number. Also, with signed, dated, and notarized signatures concerning patrons living in the area of East Maple Street. Advised public notices regarding the request of patrons of Split Rock Township Board in the Sioux Falls Argus Leader, a letter from Stockwell Engineers, and a rough estimate of construction and hard-surfacing thought between Six Mile Road and the bridge going over the Big Sioux River, joining Park Street in Brandon, South Dakota. Approximately 8,250 feet, the cost is estimated of $2.6 to $3.3 million. Mr. Boothy has stated that the state of South Dakota Department of Transportation has on file the plans from 2004 for reconstruction and surfacing of this same area of Maple Street. Speed analysis reported for the same road taken by the Minnehaha County Highway Department between the dates of April 14th of 2014 and April 27th of 2014, showing excessive speed that this road is being traveled. The road is posted at 30 miles an hour with clearly marked signs. We've asked the Minnehaha County Sheriff to patrol this road due to the excessive speeds that have been recorded. A letter from the Brandon Valley School District supporting the issue, and a letter from the City of Brandon supporting the issue. Due to the request of the patrons, due to the request and petitions by the patrons living in the area, Split Rock Township Board is requesting the consideration of the Minnehaha County Commissioners to explore the possibility of funding to complete the needs of regrading and surfacing, hard-surfacing of the East Maple Street between Six Mile Road, east to the bridge crossing the Sioux River, and joining Park Street, the city of Brandon. Thank you for your consideration. If you look through, you'll find those documents that I have discussed in here in regards to parcel numbers and owners. The 49 people that have signed petition all live in the area and have no other way to get out of their problem to get to either Six Mile Road or the city of Brandon without going through or traveling over Maple Street. Construction on the east side of Brandon over there has also constituted a large travel of contracting people and vehicles going up and down that road to circumvent going around and going through the city of Brandon. As you get through to the back here where you find a speed report, that road is posted at 30 mile an hour, but the Highway Department from Minnehaha County took a test on there for 24-hour period for 14 days. There are only three times that the speed averaged in any one hour less than 40 mile an hour. Some of those speeds averaged as high as 48 mile an hour. Without anybody to patrol that area and do anything to enforce those speed limits, it's not going to change. Then this Brandon Valley School District, a letter from David Sapon, the superintendent of Brandon Valley School District, South Dakota's, where is Split Rock Township, is holding a public hearing related to the petition for the regrading, widening, and paving of East Maple Street, beginning immediately east of Six Mile Road, and is course runs easterly terminating at the bridge crossing the Big Sioux River and paved west Park Street here in recall, Maple. The road is utilized by district parents, students, and employees related to school activities. In the fall of 2015, the district opened a new intermediate school directly east of this road. It anticipated the volume of traffic in Maple will substantially increase at this time. When the building reached capacity, approximately 1,400 students are expected to attend either the Brandon Valley Robert Bennett School or the intermediate school. Substantial number of those families are expected to travel on Maple, either in their private vehicle or through district buses. District Transportation Department regularly reroutes buses during the winter months to avoid the steep icy grades in this section of Maple. Trees along Maple Street shade the roadway, and ice-packed snow is an ongoing issue for school buses. As the district superintendent, I support the proposed improvements being made, further support the use of county, state, and federal funds for improvements, and such improvements better the health, safety, and well-being of motor passengers who use the road and the residents living adjacent to the road. Also have a letter from the city of Brandon in the same support, supporting the issue. On behalf of Split Rock Township, we would ask that you see if there's a way to pursue the idea of securing funding in the years to come. We know that it's not going to happen overnight, but it's something that if we don't start sometime, 10 years ago it was brought up. At that time, I don't understand or know what the conditions were that it didn't get approved or gets done at that time. But I think at this time, with two new schools going in on that street out there that increase the capacity, Big Sioux Recreation Area has become quite popular, it has got a lot more traffic than it used to have. I think those are some things that might be a consideration. Now with Highway 100 being extended, that's another form in the same direction. So we would ask that the Commission consider securing funding through state or federal funds. Any further questions?
Any questions for Mr. Horner? Commissioner Barth?
Thank you. So their trees are shading the road, is that because the right-of-way is so narrow that the trees are, or has, have, has the township allowed those trees to grow in the right-of-way?
Part of that is the fact that through the hilliness of the area, the trees are up way above and off of the right-of-way, thereby, and they're on the south side of the road, thereby shading considerable distance across that area. And on the other side of the road, as you drive through that area, you've noticed that there's steep gullies and ditches going down to the north side, and there are a number of trees down in there, those are also off of most of the road. But we have done, taken out quite a few of the trees in the area up there to help the situation. But you can't go back far enough in there to secure that.
If I may, so do you know if the right-of-way there is up to county highway standards?
No, it's not.
So we would have to secure that right-of-way property, which would be an additional expense?
It's a 66-foot right-of-way, 33 from each side, but in gradiness road, it's going to take other, you're going to have to do some work other than that in some areas. Not all areas, but there are some areas where the hills are so steep.
Do the people who own that land support paving the road?
Surprisingly enough, they've signed the petition.
Okay. I noticed, if I may, I noticed that you've suggested that the county, state, and federal governments share in this cost. What about the township or the city of Brandon or the school board?
There's something that has to be discussed at the time determining what funding is, comes up with.
I'm just thinking that it's not likely that the state or federal government are going to help us on this.
I'm wondering where this is at on the CCOG's plan. Ken, do you have any background on that at all? And this is also, I believe, joint jurisdiction for the city of Brandon, or it's in their, it's in their perimeter of the city of Brandon, isn't it?
Well, I did call, you know, in prep for this, I called the CCOG office to speak to the Urbanized Development, the CCOG staff person who also heads up the Urbanized Development Commission as the staff work. And, you know, this area here, east of Six Mile Road, is in fact in the city of Brandon's growth plan area. And from what I understand, and that this particular street is identified on some long-range plan documents with the UDC, however, there's been no, no funding dollar attached to it, but it's been identified, as I understand it, by the city of Brandon as part of their potential growth area, and it's a project on their list. But again, no dollars have been assigned to it because, for a wide variety of issues. From what I understand, talking with the UDC folks, is that in order for this to be, to really start being eligible, somebody's got to take jurisdiction on the road. And some, you know, it says, yes, this is our project and willing to commit some local dollars in order to leverage some other dollars to get that as part of the work plan. But that could still be, even if that's done and identified, that could still be several years away before that would happen, so.
Mr. Horner, do you know what the fund balance is of, of your township, of Split Rock Township?
About $1 million.
About $1 million. Okay. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Benega?
Is there someone here from the Highway Department?
Okay, Shannon.
Good morning, Shannon Schultz, Assistant Highway Superintendent.
Sorry, Shannon, I didn't see you sitting there. Shannon, when we talked about this earlier, there was some conversation about a minimum number of cars that needed to pass on that road before the state would move it up in the list, so to speak. Did you ever have a conversation with the state about that potential, and what's that number that they use?
I don't remember that exact terms, Mr. Benega. I think that the deal was, Ashto and FHWA consider a volume road of 400 and less to be a very low rope, a very low maintenance, or, a very low volume. That's considered, anything under 400 is considered very low volume, which kind of has a softened design standards. You can have a little steeper speed, a little steeper slopes, in terms of longitudinal grade, you know, up and down hills, and you can get away with slower speeds. So, so there's a gentle softening to go to very low-volume roads in terms of highway standards. I would like to speak quickly on speeds.
Okay.
He is, Mr. Horner is correct, we did do a speed study, and as he mentioned, there's quite a bit of speeding out there versus over and above the 30 mile per hour posted. There's a factor called the 85th percentile average speed. And in traffic engineering, we use that as an indicator to establish the speed at which people are comfortable driving based on the conditions. And the 85th percentile speed is consistently above 40 miles an hour. It's as high as 49 on some days. And it's just a fact that I wanted to bring to your attention.
So the conditions make them feel safe enough to drive at that speed, is that kind of what you're saying?
That is a rule of thumb, yes. 85th percentile is an indication of driver comfort.
Okay. Okay. Oh, Commissioner Kellley, did you have a question?
Yeah, it's for Mr. Horner. What, what is the township doing when, I assume your ice is, well, it can be, what, for several months, the problem? Do you put a de-icer on there or anything, or is it graded frequently?
In the case you're saying, when you hear your ice is such an intersection of both the township.
And do you know, or did Shannon tell us what the, what the traffic count was on that street, if I didn't, I missed it?
It's in that 215 range.
Correct.
Should we take depending on the date?
Up to 276 on April 18th.
April 25th, 281.
And as low as...
196 on 27.
Yeah. It's in that range of 215.
And what, and what's their option if, for instance, snow or ice is a problem there? What's their option to get from?
30 minutes for removing snow during the winter time, and within eight hours, we get all the township developments and all.
But what's the option, the people's option, what other route of travel do they have?
They have, these 49 people on this petition have no other route to get out other than going Maple Street, between Six Mile Road and there. There are two developments off of that, one being country gables, one and two, and the other one being Indian hills, and then foster residents that live in that mile and a half stretch of the road. There is more to wait for them to go in there.
Yeah, it's hard to tell in the, in the aerial view, but there's quite a bit of relief out there. As was mentioned earlier, there's quite a bit of up and down, longitudinal slope changes indicating relief.
Is that going to have to be cut down if we go and pave that, or are you going to have to make those sightlines better?
To increase the design speed, absolutely correct. The hills will be cut down, and then the slopes go out, and then the needed right-of-way, whether it's permit or an easement, gets large. Similarly, on the fills, when you go into a valley or a sag, you have to lift those up to increase your design speed. And again, the toes of those slopes will get quite far out from the center line to make them a safe shoulder.
I think it back to 2002 or '04 when this was written, we discussed that there was, that happened to be some problems that they had getting together with some landlord agreeing on how far back to go, is that not right?
I'm not aware of the details, but I'm certain that landlords will want to be very well-informed about how much changes will occur should it reach a design standard for a highway standard.
Are there any other questions for Shannon or Mr. Horner? This is a presentation, this isn't listed as a, a motion or anything, this is listed as a presentation.
So what's the next step?
There isn't a next step at this time, other than we can maybe look into CCOG and see what their, what other options are out there.
Madam Chair, I wonder if we should ask our Highway Department to look into this?
The Highway Department's been working on it, I think, haven't you? You've been working on it?
Well, specifically, we're aware of the intentions or hopes of the township. We are aware also that there is a speed study attached to trunk Highway 100. We're looking into, and it's been slow-going, but we're looking into what that speed study, how they modeled the traffic on Maple, whether it was modeled as a gravel road in perpetuity, as a future Brandon street. And I believe because it wasn't long-range planned as a Brandon street, I'm guessing that it was modeled as a Brandon street. I do not know that for sure.
Madam Chair, I have another question, I guess, but it's for the State's Attorney. Kirsten, do we have the power to assess the property owners along this road for the cost of the improvements like the way the city does?
No.
Okay.
The shortest answer ever.
But then you had to follow on with that.
Are there any other questions?
I have a question.
Shannon?
If it is the will of the Commission for the Highway to study something or look into something, what is that? I mean, Mr. Horner did a good job presenting facts. We agree with all the facts that he presented. So what, what is it that you would like the Highway Department to do?
I'm just wondering, has anybody contacted CCOG, other than we know that it's on their long-range planning? I would like to know where they're at on that. And maybe you could facilitate just finding out that information for us. finding out that information for us, as to where Seacog on in this, and in the study that you just mentioned, we're obviously gonna need more information on that when that's completed before we could do anything.
And then would that be presented to you as a report or as, as a commission?
You can just do a report, I think.
Would, I mean, would they make a formal applicant, the township board take a formal application to us to put this on the county highway system? Would that be the first step in it? I mean, we have a yes or no on that, obviously, but would that be the, the way to go?
Kirsten?
They can make that request of us, I believe they have a request before you at this time, that that's one of the options that they've asked you to take. So I'm not sure anything else is needed to put that request before you. Of course, there are some procedures in the law about a binding petition bringing before you, and I briefed you on that before about the sufficiency of that, but I believe the request is before you about taking that on, and certainly you can discuss that at any time if you wish to consider that. They would obviously have to release it too by resolution, but by their position, I don't see that as being an issue.
And at this point, we don't have a binding petition on this issue, which is different than what we have.
Do we have any, any cost estimates on this?
Yes.
Yep, three-point, he had it in his paperwork, too.
Prepared as part of the petition process and the hearing process, that Split Rock Township did, and that, and you have that in your material and that on Dropbox, and I believe the number, I can look here, but the number was somewhere between 2.3 and $3 million in order to do that approx, little between 8,000 and 9,000 feet of that road.
The actual adjusted was 2.6 to 3.3.
But we, we do have a problem with just, with, with the count of 250 of looking at this as a paved road and spending three and a half billion dollars.
It doesn't meet the standards.
You know, and for, for informational purposes, I just wanna point out as well, you know, right here, 119, that Six Mile Road, that's, that's on our system. 140 is a county road right here, which is approximately, I'm thinking, a mile, little over a mile north of there, and then we have another county road, 142. So there's three county roads bracketing that area, you know, right now, and that's all.
But this is effectively an arterial street, or there's not enough traffic there to justify that? If not, okay. Shannon's shaking his head.
Are there any other questions or comments at this point? Commissioner Barth?
Well, I, I guess I'm aware that over in Benton Township, that we did receive a request to take over a road over there, and I think that the process is, that then it goes to the state DOT, and then they have to approve it, and then it would come back to us, and I guess I'm not sure where the Benton County, or Benton Township request is at, but...
I think the traffic count was similar on there, there were around 200 cars per day, too, from where Shannon went, I think that's about right.
But that is correct. I mean, you could take an affirmative action to include this on the county highway system, which then would put it into our long-range plans, et cetera, to do work on it, but then again, you know, maybe Split Rock has to agree to turn it over to us as well, and then once you've accepted it, then it also has to be approved at the state level by DOT, and then to be added on to our system.
But by, by doing that, we, we get the action started on it, is that correct?
If you, well, if you accept it on, if you accept it under the system, and then the state says yes, and that we approve that, then you would do assume not only maintenance responsibility, you assume all responsibility for graveling and everything else, and at this particular junction, I don't know, I think I'm right in saying, there's only an extremely small portion of the county highway system that is gravelled.
Correct, there's two miles in our highway system that are currently gravelled. We farm that out to our adjacent county to the west, because we don't have the knowledge and the equipment to maintain gravel roads. Those times have passed.
Commissioner Benega, you had a comment?
Mr. Horner, you said that Brandon's got this in their long-range plan, but you didn't say when they were going to be looking at that.
I don't know where that, Shannon's, but it's part of the UDC.
And I think it's also in Brandon's long-term plans, this road is, and it's also in the UDC.
It sounds like it is, a street mentioned in the long-range plan for the city of Brandon, and I believe that would be looked at, in my opinion, that would be looked at heavily by the state DOT Transportation Commission, as to who does have ownership of that road.
Right, and I think that's the direction we need to go at this point. Commissioner Benega?
Well, that was where I was going, is when you do your report, it would be nice to know where they're at with this process also.
Certainly.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Horner.
Thank you very much. We understand that this isn't gonna happen overnight, it's a long-range program, which you gotta start somewhere.
You gotta start somewhere, that's right. Thank you. Okay, you can go on.
Item number 12 would be to authorize the chairman to sign a contract for short-term residential substance abuse pretreatment services between Minnehaha County and Carroll Institute. Mr. McFarland?
Commissioners, as you know, we've had an agreement though, for at least the last year, maybe even longer, with Carroll Institute to hold our IVCs, is what we call them, our involuntary commitments for drug and alcohol issues, and that under the current agreement that we have with them, they provide housing and program services for up to eight individuals per day within their facility on Spring Avenue, and we can go up as high as 10 on a short-term basis, and that, and in the event that they routinely exceed that bed count, we can negotiate a funding gap if one presents itself. We have the 2015 contract ready for your consideration. It is the same dollar amount, 222,660 dollars per year, paid in 12 monthly installments, and it's the same amount that we paid in 2014. The one main provision of the contract that we did change is that due to a variety of reasons, just making sure we have a better handle on bed utilization and bed counts through the year, and I know that Carroll Institute is also looking at some program service modifications perhaps down in the line, we've, we've inserted a provision in section three of the contract that allows us to take a look at those utilization rates, any other changes in program modifications that might be contemplated by Carroll Institute. As long as we do that prior to June of 2015, we can make necessary contract adjustments on rates or any other factor that we have. This contract's been reviewed by Carroll Institute, and they have indicated their acceptance of the agreement. I believe Gary Tucci is here, does he have any questions about the program, or, but as far, the only real change in the contract is the fact that we have the review prior to June of 2015.
Any questions for Ken? Is there a motion?
Would move for approval. Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the contract between Minnehaha County and Carroll Institute. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item number 13 would be to authorize the chairperson to sign contract between Minnehaha County and the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance for Administrative Services. Mr. McFarland?
Commissioners, as you know, our, most of our primary insurance coverages are through, you know, for auto, general liability, police professional, government officials, liability, et cetera, is with the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, and we've been a member of that organization for several years. The Board of Directors for the Association, about a year ago, have made the determination that they were going to do in-house administration and marketing services and bring it within the confines of the Public Assurance Alliance themselves. They used to perform those services through a contract that they had with Hagan Benefits. So beginning in January 1, all of those services that used to be provided by Hagan Benefits are now performed in-house by staff members of the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. You do have a copy of the organizational chart to show how this will now work. So what we have with you now is a modified agreement that we've had with the Public Assurance Alliance for several years, but the new modified agreement just recognizes the organizational change whereby Hagan Benefits is no longer acting as the third-party administrator, and that, and now this is all performed in-house by the Public Assurance Alliance. So those are the major changes to that agreement. Again, we've had an agreement with the Public Assurance Alliance for several years, this just recognizes the new organizational structure that was approved by the Board of Directors.
Are there any questions for Ken regarding this contract? Is there a motion to approve? Commissioner Barth?
Ken, what about the cost on this? Is the cost the same?
And that most of our costs that we pay for participation is through our premiums, and that, and in fact, if you take a look at the letter, the letter that came from the Public Assurance Alliance, and that most of those premium reductions, they've had an actual reduction in premiums for most of our coverages.
I wasn't sure I figured that out.
Sure.
I'd like a motion to approve this contract.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the contract between Minnehaha County and the South Dakota Public Alliance for Administrative Services. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item number 14, which was deferred from January 6, 2015, is a public hearing to consider text amendment for Article 7.07 of the 1990 Revised Zoning Ordinance for Minnehaha County, which would allow a salvage or a junkyard in the industrial one light industrial district as a conditional use. Kevin Hookman?
Scott.
Mr. Anderson today, I see you.
Thank you. Scott Anderson, Minnehaha County Planning and Zoning. As Auditor Litz indicated, this is a second reading of an ordinance, a proposed ordinance amendment that was continued from last week. It would allow salvage yards and junkyards as a conditional use within the light industrial zoning district. This was a petition that was brought forth by a citizen. That applicant is here in the audience. I would be glad to answer any questions. I have included the planning commission's minutes, and they recommended approval of the, of the text amendment to allow this as a conditional use. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. Otherwise, this is a public hearing, and I, I know that you, on Friday, we did receive a written letter, which I think was forwarded to you on Friday in regard to this as well.
Are there any questions for Scott? I have one question, Scott. Didn't this start out as a code violation?
It did. We've been working on this project or this situation since about June or July. It was brought forth to us as a complaint. This is the property owner or the subject property, the property in question is in the Brower addition, which is on the south side of Hartford, and property owners there called our office to complain that there was vehicle, junk vehicles being stored on the property, and that there were, there were also vehicles being transported on the, on the roads, and as you all are aware, the roads in Brower addition tend to be a sensitive issue for the property owners. They were not happy with the additional traffic, they were not, the, the complainant was not happy with the traffic, was not happy with the fact that there was apparently glass and other debris being left on the road, and supposedly chemicals or antifreeze and oil and stuff that were dri, that was dripping on the ground. So they, they were unhappy with that, and that was the basis of their complaint.
Can you explain how this got from a code violation to a revised, a request for a revised zoning?
Sure. That's, when, when we, when we get code enforcement, or when we deal with code enforcement, we, we meet with the property owner, or we discuss this with them vis-à-vis a letter, or then probably also then in person, and we lay out all of the options that they, are available to them. They can cease and desist and bring the property into compliance with the zoning ordinance, which would mean stop the, the operation, or they can, another option they have is to apply for the, the required permit. In this case, where the, where the applicant was, where the subject property is located, that property is owned I-1 light industrial, and a salvage yard or junkyard is not even a permitted use or a conditional use, it's not even allowed in that zoning district. So we explained to the property owner that one option that he has is to attempt to amend the zoning ordinance to allow this in some fashion, and we had explained to the applicant that the, probably the best way would be, the most likely way would be as a conditional use. This is similar to what has been done in the joint city of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, I-1 light industrial district. We went through an amendment about eight, nine years ago, seven, eight years ago, for property up on North 60th Street that was zoned I-1, and so the applicant, the, the person, the zoning violator, chose to attempt to amend the zoning ordinance to allow this as a conditional use. So this would be the first step, would be to amend the text to, to allow this as a conditional use. The next step would be that the applicant would then have to come in and apply for a conditional use permit, which would then go to the planning commission for review. There certainly would be conditions of approval that would be attached to that, like we do with the majority of our conditional use permits, which would be things like screening, landscaping, hours of operation, lighting, the discussion of, of how they would deal with fluids, how high you could stack vehicles, I mean, there's all kinds of conditions that would probably be attached to that conditional use permit, and it would also give the public a, an option to attend the public hearings at the planning commission and this board, this body, to determine whether that was an appropriate use for that site. So just the fact that we're changing the zoning today doesn't necessarily mean that it's, it's a done deal, that he's gonna be able to operate his, his business there. There would be another whole step we, we would have to go through with the conditional use permit. That's a long, a long answer to your question of how this started out as a code enforcement, but it, it goes, it goes back to, you know, due process. Everyone has the, the right to, to apply, to amend the zoning ordinance, and then that's what this applicant chose to do.
Okay. Are there any more questions? First, Commissioner Kelly?
I'm trying to get a timeline on this. When did, when did this operation start business?
That I, I couldn't tell you. I think we received the, my recollection was we received the complaint in like August, August, and we sent the applicant a letter, and then, you know, we give them a couple, you know, two or three weeks to reply, then we sent him a second letter, and then he came in and, and made the application, and that went to the, to the planning commission in November.
Well, when, when you sent the initial letter, you, the applicant became aware that what he was doing was not, not in compliance with our zoning ordinance, is that correct?
Yes.
And prior to that, when he went into business, is there any permits, or was there any building permit or anything like this that was required on the property?
No.
So there's no reason that you would have had any contact with him?
That's correct.
Other than the fact it's a junkyard and maybe, or whatever, and maybe should be checked, but...
Are there questions for Scott? Commissioner Benega?
Scott, is this part of the road district conversation that we've had along with many challenges in court?
Well, it all, it all plays into that, because as I indicated, the, the property owners out there are all very, are all very sensitive about the amount of traffic that is coming and going on those roads, and they monitor it closely, and when they saw that there was additional traffic and that, that, that was an issue to them, then they, they informed me and questioned how this could be occurring, and then, you know, we started investigating it, go out, take pictures, and then started the, the code enforcement action.
Any questions?
I have a question for the attorney, and I'm sure it won't be a short answer. This case is still in court, correct?
Correct.
Will, will this road district issue have any effect on our ability for a conditional use?
No, your conditional uses are determined by your ordinance.
Okay. I wanna make sure before we move ahead.
Commissioner Barth?
Scott, what happens with the, the violations that have already been documented? Do they just evaporate on the passing of this change?
Well, our, our policy has always been, we, we attempt to work with the property owner to bring them into compliance, and if they are attempting to work with us with, like submitting a rezoning ordinance, then we sort of stay the enforcement of that. And part of that's, we work with the property owner, and we work in conjunction with the state's attorney's office, because they don't necessarily want to prosecute someone... state's attorney's office, because they don't necessarily want to prosecute someone when we're in the process of going through a text amendment or trying to bring them into compliance.
So you also said that the, we did in, was it 1990? Did a revision of the zoning ordinance between, is that correct? Or maybe that's the other...
That was when we adopted the, that's when we adopted our zoning ordinance for the county. We adopted, it was, I believe it was back in 1997, or, excuse me, in 2007, we went through a text amendment with the joint ordinance with the City of Sioux Falls. And that was in regard to a piece of property that was up off of North 60th. And TNJ auto, or TNJ metal recyclers wanted to move their facility out there, and we amended our zoning ordinance to allow that as a conditional use permit on that facility. Ultimately, they decided not to go out there because there was some discussion about being a gateway into the city. I think we have a couple, the benefit of having a couple county, city commissioners that were also dealing with that. I see Auditor Litz is shaking his head that he remembers that as well. So, I mean, there was some discussion on that. Ultimately, it did not go in that facility. But we had, we did change our text for the joint zoning ordinance for the City of Sioux Falls and the county. So it is allowed now as a conditional use in the I-1 zoning district. So this wouldn't be unsimilar to what we've done in the past. That's why we sort of suggested this to the applicant as one option. That was probably the best route, other than stopping, cease and desist, and cleaning off the property of any salvage vehicles. This was the next best thing.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I got a follow-up.
Commissioner Kelly?
The letter you referred to, she indicated that I-1, that it was not allowed, that...
That's in the city. She's, the applicant that you're, the letter that you received on Friday, that was in regard to the auto recycling, another project that we worked on, that was up off of North Cliff at the top of the hill. And it was, I don't think she's correct in her facts.
So you're saying that I-1 in the city, I-1, you can get a conditional use permit for a salvage yard?
I don't know if it's in the city.
It's in our joint jurisdiction.
It's in the joint area. The letter that you received is specific to inside the city limits of Sioux Falls, and I, I'm not sure, to be honest, what the city of Sioux Falls allows or not.
Well, on the joint jurisdictional, the city ordinances would apply within the city limits over that.
No.
No?
Not at all, no.
I just, I'm concerned there because, I don't know if she said it or you said it, that I-1 is intended as rather a buffer into the I-2, which is a heavy industrial. Is that, is that true? What is the intent of an I-1 versus I-2?
Well, the intent of the I-1 is more light, light manufacturing, not light uses, light industrial uses. The I-2 is more heavy industrial, like, heavy manufacturing, tire retreading, you know, steel, heavy steel works. There's a difference. And, you know, I guess it's debatable whether you would consider an auto, a junkyard or auto salvage as light industrial, if that's a suitable use. We had, it was, it was discussed, it was discussed when we went through this in 2006, '07, was in the winter of that, in that time period, that there was some discussion. It was deemed okay, acceptable within the city, joint city-county area jurisdiction. It was, and subsequently, that ordinance was adopted and changed.
Okay. When you say the joint jurisdictional area, that's the area outside the city limits, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I'm, so you do not know whether or not salvage yards are allowed as a conditional use in an I-1 in the city?
I do not know that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Barth?
Scott, you're basically bringing this to us as a solution, but the applicant is present. I wonder if he might want to...
It's a public hearing, so we'll get to that when you're done asking questions.
Thanks.
Are there any more questions? Okay. It's a public hearing. Would the proponent like to speak to this, please? You identify yourself and give your address, please.
Scott Nessek, 1806 East 29th Street North, Sioux Falls. Our shop is out there in the Brower addition. It's off, located, clear off in the back corner. No traffic. We do not do, we do not buy, we do not sell cars out of there. It's basically used as a storage lot for us. We have five of the seven tow yards here in town. We pick them up in town, take them out there, we take them from there, take them to Sioux City. I mean, it's pretty simple. We were there two years earlier. I took the contract away from one of the opponents that are complaining today, or was complaining about it. I made the complaint. He's pissed at us, and that's the reason we're here. We were there two years and never had a word said to anybody. I get along with my neighbors. They have a garbage sanitation right across the road from us. They have garbage trucks, a lot heavier than any truck I pull in and out of there. We have one-ton duallys. He has 26, 28,000-pound trucks going in and out of there. I guess, I don't see any, I don't see where they're coming up with, let's call it a junkyard because it's not a junkyard. It's a holding area is what it basically is. If you got any questions, I'd sure be happy to answer them, but, I mean, it's pretty plain, cut, cut and simple.
Are there any questions for Mr. Nessek? Commissioner Barth?
So when you started business out there, how long ago was it, and did you think about...
Maybe three years ago this June is when we started out there. We talked to the landlord. We actually rented the property at first, asked the landlord about it, and he said there'd be no problem with it. Basically, store our trucks there. And like I said, we grab the cars from in town instead of making the mess out on the streets, or we just come in and pick them up, take them out there, two at a time, and then we load them up onto the bigger trailer out there. There's no...
Pardon me? So are these vehicles wrecked vehicles, or...
Yes. What they are is impounded from the city here. They go around to their city or their state. When they're on state calls, they bring them in. The tow yards apply for the titles. We grab the titles. We pay them for them. We take the titles. We put it on the national system, saying that we either scrap them, we sold them off somewhere else, which most of our cars, 99% of them, are sold to Sioux City as scrap iron.
Commissioner Kelly?
Do you own the land or lease it?
We lease it with the option to buy from the gentleman. We're taking full responsibility for any of the unconditional permits that Scott wants. We pay for the application here today to do this. We'll pay for any fencing that you want up. I mean, we want to work with you. And if we knew about it before, we would have never even been there, I guess, is what you'd want to say.
Is your, is your existing operation in the city limits of Sioux Falls?
No, it's out there.
Oh, okay. You said east.
That's my address. The address...
Okay, I'm sorry. This is your business then, right there?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Nessek, Scott, would you please spell your last name for me for the matter of the public record?
N-I-S-C-H, Nessek.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Nessek? He does not own the property, and you were not aware that this was not allowed in that area because your landlord told you it was.
Correct. I mean, we've been, like I said, we operated there, it'd be three years this May, I think is when we signed the lease on it. So we've been there almost three years. Now this came up here in August, saying that, hey, it's not permitted. Are you going to put us out of business? Because that's what you'd basically be doing. We've been there before. I piss off a customer, or piss off one of my competitors, and then he signs the complaint. Now all of a sudden, I'm in ordinance violation. There's also another salvage yard right there in the same Brower addition. He didn't know anything about this either. That's the reason we're trying to get it cleared up so idiots like me can stay in business, I guess, you know, instead of collecting our welfare or having to worry about that part of it.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Nessek? Are there any other proponents? Okay, I'm going to sit down. Are there any opponents?
Good morning. I'm Al Miron, 25935, 469th Avenue, Sioux Falls. Commissioners, I don't believe you amputate your leg because you've stubbed your toe. And I think that sort of thing applies here. I don't think we necessarily have to change the ordinance because we have someone in non-compliance. I, first of all, want to correct, I think, a statement that was made last week and on my part. I like to do my homework ahead of time. Didn't have an opportunity to do that, and I think when there was discussion about whether or not this was approved in the city of Sioux Falls, and at that time, I didn't distinguish the city from Sioux Falls in the joint ordinance. And so I agreed that it was allowed in the city of Sioux Falls. I've since found out that's not the case. A salvage yard or junkyard is not allowed in the city of Sioux Falls. And I have the information from the Shape Places Ordinance here that indicates it's permitted in the heavy warehouse and freight movement areas. And in that area, they do allow a salvage operation or a junkyard. So that's the city itself. I'm not familiar with the, with the joint ordinance and where that might fall. I'm not going to repeat all the testimony that I had last week, because I think that would be redundant, but I do want to make a couple of points. And that is that in the I-1 Light Industrial District, without conditional use, that is the permissive uses, you offer, you allow such things as offices, banks, or financial institutions, indoor recreation facilities, mortuaries, nurseries, and greenhouses. And I don't think a salvage yard or junkyard fits into any of those categories. You also allow for conditional use anything that's allowed in the C Commercial District. So a conditional use in the I-1 is anything allowed in the C1 Commercial District. And those things in the C1 Commercial District that are allowed include such things as wholesale trade, bar lounges, motor vehicle sales and display, service, rental, lumber yards, car wash, hotel or motel, hospitals, campgrounds, commercial recreation facilities. I don't think a salvage yard or a junkyard is something that should be allowed in the I-1 Industrial District. The I-2 Industrial District specifically allows that, and it's intended for heavy manufacturing. So with that, I will add that information to what I presented last week, and I think the things that I presented last week here still apply. So I would ask that you not allow this change in the ordinance. I think there are other solutions, and I know you don't like to do spot zoning, but I think there are opportunities to rezone I-1 areas to I-2 areas, and you can solve this matter in that way, rather than changing the general ordinance, which will allow a junkyard or salvage yard under conditional use. I realize that it's under conditional use, and they're going to put certain conditions on it, but they're probably still going to allow it. So I would ask that you not change the ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Other questions for Mr. Miron? Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments from the proponent? That would be you.
Any other opponents?
Oh, are there any? Excuse me, there's one more opponent. We ought to let him talk first, sorry. If you could spell your last name?
S-H-M-I-D-T, Bernie Schmidt. I sent you a letter on Friday, and I have no dog in this fight. I just wanted to clear up what I had, what I believed was bad testimony to you, that the city of Sioux Falls only allows junkyards in the I-2. And the reason for that is because I-1 is considered a buffer, like I said in my letter. And it, you know, spot zoning is not a good thing, but in this case, it might be preferable to have it I-2.
Thank you.
Any questions for me?
Yep. Mr. Schmidt? Okay, thank you.
I apologize for saying she. I thought it was Bonnie, not Bernie.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other opponents? Now I can speak for the proponents again, please.
I guess the way I look at it is that we're not a junkyard like Nordstrom's, we're not a junkyard like Oakley. We are a holding yard. That's all that yard is used for, is to hold vehicles, to get enough built up to put a bigger load besides taking them down one at a time down to Sioux City. You have, if you don't want a, if you say in banks and everything, I don't think they want a garbage service right in their I-1 area. I mean, like I said, there's a garbage service right in front of us. There's a gentleman that fixes on Interstate that has a lot more heavier trucks than my trucks will ever come in and out of there with, right next door to me. There's A1 Sanitations right, right exactly next door to me. So, I mean, it's, it's prime area right where I'm at. I mean, I've talked to both my neighbors out there. They've had no problems with me. Nothing whatsoever said to me about it. I did confront him because one's his uncle that made the complaint. I confronted him about it, and he said his uncle's just a no man, and the guy across the mile that I pissed off, my competitor, is his buddy. So they complained about him. I mean, I don't see the problem with it. Like I said, we've been there almost three years, and now all of a sudden, this comes up. If you want me to do unconditional permits, I'll do it. I'll do whatever you guys ask, because all I'm asking is let's just get it over and done with so we quit having the headaches, and I can go to back to work.
Thank you. Scott?
I just wanted to, excuse me, I just wanted to clarify that, as you recall, we have had a court ruling. We've had some discussion on really what constitutes a salvage yard as opposed to an auto resale facility. And specifically, it's my opinion, based on that court opinion, that this would classify as a salvage yard, because they're not operable, they're damaged, and we had the court ruling, you recall, a couple of years ago, that said that would really constitute a salvage yard. So while the applicant doesn't believe his business really falls into a salvage yard, and in some ways, you may agree with him, we may not agree with him, I really think that the best way to handle it was to say it's a salvage yard, they're wrecked, they're inoperable, it's a salvage yard, in my opinion. So that's why I directed him in that direction.
Okay. Mr. Miron has one more comment.
Yes, and I'm very familiar with that court case, but in this case, if it's deemed to be not a salvage yard or not a junkyard, then you have no need to change the ordinance.
Are there any other questions from the commission? I note that he didn't have any opposition from his neighbors. Motions? Commissioner Benega?
I'll reiterate what I said, I think, last week, is I don't think that three years later, we ought to put someone out of business who maybe got some bad information from a landlord. There's a fine line between what some of us would consider a junkyard or a scrapyard or whatever. The bottom line is, is when you look at the uses around him, I frankly don't see a lot of difference in the usage. And, you know, that particular group has chosen to be their own independent, almost government with their road district. And frankly, they've kind of done things on their own since, as long as I can remember. And I'm going to support that we move ahead with this.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? I'd look for a motion. Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Benega, so you're going to support the idea of changing the zoning district there?
I'm going to leave it as I-1 Industrial. And, or, I'm sorry, change it from I-1 Industrial to I-2, it's Industrial. And then...
No, no, no.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
Text amendment.
With the text amendment?
With the text amendment.
Okay. I feel like you're getting me confused.
I'm looking at the wrong memorandum.
Okay. Is that a motion, Commissioner Benega?
Yes, it is.
Okay, it's a motion to revise our ordinance to include salvage or junk in the I-1 Light Industrial District with conditional uses.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second. Any other comments? Commissioner Kelly?
Well, this is more than just this one instance, because, I mean, this is a zoning change, this is a change in our zoning ordinance, and I agree with Mr. Miron that you don't, you know, you don't do surgery for an office call. This, this could have long-term effects, and I really believe that, I don't sense a lot of support on the part of the planning staff, and I'm not sure, I didn't read in there whether or not they supported it. I... I do think that we're taking action here. It's leased land, it's not bought land. You know, I think that if, in fact, they can't find a remedy for why, we'd be more than willing to work for them during relocation. But that being said, I just, I'm, I think this is a zoning issue, this is a change in zoning issue, and I will not support it. I think it's a step that we probably should not be taking. I think when you look at the uses that are in an I-1 district right now, I do not think a salvage yard fits within those, even under a conditional use.
Any other comments? Commissioner Barth?
I'd just point out that within two miles of this location, we have two other I-2 locations operating. One a mile to the east and one mile and a half south. So, the, and I think most of us have been by the Brower addition, you know, they have that bulk oil thing. It's, it's just, it's a bit of a rough spot, the Brower addition.
Any other comments? I am going to support this, just because this has been done in the joint jurisdiction. We've already been all through this. Not myself personally, but this was thoroughly discussed, and it's consistent with what the county has done in the past. I also think that with a conditional use permit, we will be looking at the areas of I-1 Light Industrial where they're going to be putting anything. And if we feel like it is not the correct fit, that's the commission's prerogative to say, no, we're not going to allow that in there, and that's what the conditional use permit is for. Commissioner Kelly?
Excuse me, you said it's done in compliance with what we've done in the past?
We already have, we, this was approved six or seven years ago in the joint jurisdiction between the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha Counties. But we've already moved forward with this six years ago.
I'm sorry, we have done a conditional use for a salvage yard within an I-1 district?
Yes, yes. That's what Scott testified to today. Yes. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, we have a motion on the table to revise the ordinance that would allow a salvage or junkyard in an I-1 Light Industrial as a conditional use.
We should do a roll call.
Roll call, both.
Roll call, vote, Mr. Benega?
Yes.
Mr. Barth?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
No.
Cindy?
Yes.
A motion passes three to one. Thank you. Okay. When you're ready, we can go on.
Item number 15 is to consider a motion to amend action taken on December 23rd, 2014, to authorize depositive proceeds of the surplus highway department property auction on Iron Planet into the Highway Fund from $45,276 to $45,229.96. Mr. Barth?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second to authorize the deposit of proceeds from the surplus of the Highway Department. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item number 16 is to authorize the Sheriff's Department to purchase five Dodge Chargers in the amount of $1,200, or $129,630 from Wagner Auto in Pierce, South Dakota, from contract number 16678. And they were competitively bid by the state of South Dakota. We have Kristen Trenna.
Good morning, I'm Kristen Trenna with the Sheriff's Office. Like you said, we're requesting authorization to purchase these five Chargers. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions for Kristen? Look for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
A motion?
Second.
And a second to authorize the Sheriff's Office to purchase their Dodge Chargers. These were a budgeted item for 2015. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Madam Sheriff, I have a question for Kristen.
Yep.
Did any of our vehicles suffer damage in Kimball?
That's probably not a question for Kristen.
Okay, sorry.
So, thank you. That's okay, that's all right, that's not a question for you.
I don't know the extent of any of that at this point, so I'm sorry.
Yep, thank you. Number 17.
Item number 17, to consider a resolution from the Siouxland Heritage Museum Board to authorize an adjustment to the marketing price for Track III Hall's addition. Bill Hoskins.
Good morning, Commissioners, Bill Hoskins, Director of the Siouxland Heritage Museum. You'll remember last spring, the commission employed Doug Brockhouse of Bender Commercial as a broker for 20, approximately 20 acres we're selling. It comprises today Hall, Track III of Hall's Edition. There's been no action on that property. And in October, Doug met with the museum board and presented them with a report that covered sales in the area. And based upon that report, the museum board is recommending a reduction in the asking price. And I think that report is attached in the document. There are several members of the museum board here. If you want to talk to a board member directly, Doug is also here.
Are there questions for Bill? Bill, has the museum board discussed opening up the whole entire parcel? I don't remember exactly how many acres you guys need, but I think you guys have, like, the prime location. Have you thought about switching around and just saying, whatever, we'll sell, and we want this much land out of there?
I believe that in the meetings with Doug, that was discussed. And although the listing is the 19 acres we'd like to sale, we would certainly, I believe this is what we told them, is accept or look at any offers made on any of the property.
Okay.
So, I think that's been our understanding all along, that certainly if someone brings an offer for a million dollars for that five acres, we're going to take a look at.
Okay. Questions for Bill? Commissioner Kelly?
Bill, if, and you could move yours to, that shape of that thing, to me, doesn't look like very attractive to sell to industrial, or to any kind of commercial operation. If you moved over to the east, the lower leg of that thing, that would not be a problem?
Well, one of the chief difficulties, and one of the reasons Kari Hall gave us the corner, and really, in particular, is that property, that five acres, is about 30 feet above the elevation, it's almost 40 feet above some of the other parts of the property that we're selling. And it's out of the floodplain, the site we are. Some of the other portions to the east would be actually in the floodplain as defined by FEMA.
I'm sorry, you're saying that if you, it's kind of a S, or, I don't know how you'd describe it, but, yeah. If you move to that east portion, you're saying somebody'd have a problem building there because of floodplain?
No, I'm saying, one of the reasons that the five acres that was picked by Kari is because it's out of the floodplain. Its elevation is considerably higher than the rest of the property. And that's one of the big concerns, is getting and keeping the museum collection out of the floodplain. I'm not saying that you couldn't make-
I'm still making a sense of that. Are you saying the rest of it is in the floodplain?
A lot of it is.
Including that east part, that east leg?
No, both of them. Yes.
Are there any more questions for Bill?
I'd love to drive out, I'll show you.
Commissioner Barth?
Madam Sheriff, I think that the drainage obviously is an issue, but as far as the appearance of the building, I know that our other partner in this project was concerned that it was too fancy. And so, some of the design aspects, which were originally incorporated to make it more attractive, have been taken out, which also reduced the cost. But, you know, we compromised the appearance in order to make it less expensive and to please the other side. I think that the other land is not necessarily in the floodplain, but I do know that it's downhill from this part. And having water coming downhill is something that is hoped to be avoided.
There's no more questions for Bill?
I have a question on Doug, Lois.
Yeah, I was going to ask Doug if you'd come up and just speak to this a little bit. Commissioner Kelly, you have a question for Doug?
Doug Brockhouse, Bender Commercial.
Thank you.
Well, Doug, you know that piece I'm talking about, the far east portion? And it just, to me, to try and sell that whole package without the prime corner is a lot more difficult than, than not. I assume the corner probably has the greatest value in moving on forward. Am I right there?
From a real estate viewpoint, you're absolutely correct. We've had multiple discussions about having the corner and how that would possibly make it easier for us to market the piece. We have, we have not had our hands tied and said, under no circumstances will we sell that corner piece. We understand that there's been some substantial dollars spent previously to grade that and essentially make it build ready, so that when the funding becomes available, the county can build their archives building there. But our hands are not tied. We could, if we received an offer, that somebody says, hey, we really want the corner, another seven more acres, something like that, we would come running with that offer in our hand to the, to the board to make sure that they understood that somebody might have the desire.
Nobody really wants this whole property right now. We've got to go out and find somebody and make them want it.
Essentially, that's true.
I think the first thing they see is this goofy shape and-
Yeah, but we like a challenge, Dick. And you know that, you've been in the business. The challenge is how we make our money. But, you know, really, the purpose of meeting today and this resolution is that if you take a look at what's happened in that area over the last 12 months, if you go up there today, you'll see that there's a very large building being constructed just to the west of this piece of property. That's a future home of High Rollers Enclosed Conveyor Company. They're building a new, and I'm going to be a little bit off in these numbers, but I'll come close, 100 to 150,000-foot manufacturing facility. And they purchased that land from Dale Janz in the mid $2 range, in the 250 or so, somewhere in that area. Adjacent to that property is another sale that took place to a company called Enalmesis of Semprin Co. It's a company that manufactures dog shampoo and dog toys and those type items. They're currently located over in the old Nabisco Building over in the airport industrial park. Successful business, and they're going to build up in that area. So, and they purchased land also in the mid $2 area. The land directly north of Sencor Corporation on the west side of Westport, that property's been on the market for $2 a foot. They accepted an offer for $1.60. The potential buyer couldn't get his buildings to fit on it correctly, so they dropped that purchase agreement. But it just gives you an idea. We were at $3.40 a foot asking price. In addition to that, the platting fees and road construction costs and those things were high. So, more so, Dick, than the shape of the property, I think we might have been not getting as much interest, more so because of the asking price and the price being asked by the competing properties around the area. And in order to move this thing forward, to get a little bit more in line with, with the current asking price for a property, that's where we're standing here today. Additionally, the Sioux Falls DeBown Foundation is currently working on adding to their Park Number Eight on the east side of I-229, north of where the Main Society Building is. So, there's a potential, there's another large piece coming on track over there. So, you know, that's why we're here today, is saying, let's just try to get the asking price for the property and hopefully promote a sale, and just get more in line with the market. The other one I wanted to point out is that they did have a land auction of the old Howard Johnson site. That occurred about a month ago now. And that's six acres. They would, they would have accepted an offer of around a million dollars for that six acres, and which would have been $3.80 or so. They didn't even get half, half of that for the highest offer, and that was pulled back off the market. So, you know, just to give you an idea of what's going on in the area. Question?
No question. It's not a question, I just want to comment that, you know, the board, the museum board wants to make this property more flexibly, flexible. As far as the marketing, we want to make it easier. And there's also the fact that our listing contract with the Bender Group is actually about to expire, and we plan to keep them on on a month-to-month basis. I believe that's correct.
Well, you didn't tell me that.
So, they're bringing forward that they would like to have the latitude to change, to lower their price. I'm just wondering, did you want a price set? Or how much latitude do we give you?
It's in the resolution.
It's in the resolution, okay. That is, reduce the list price for Track III Hall addition according to the record plat thereof, for the current, from the current price of $3.40 per square foot to $2.50 per square foot.
And here's the floor.
Oh, and the sale of the property not be less than $1.75 per square foot. Commissioner Kelly?
Just a comment. And I'm not, this isn't in opposition to what we're doing, because I think the price is obviously reflecting that there's no market for it at that price right now. But if I remember correctly, somewhere in that document agreement with the city of Sioux Falls, we're on, we're on the hook for anything over, I can't remember, the number was at 1.2 million or whatever. Somehow, the county's on the hook for any overages on that, which if we, you know, if we get significantly less for this property than we, than we initially planned, to my knowledge, that's going to come back to us. And we're going to have to relook at that building, but-
If I may.
Commissioner Beck?
I think the intent of the agreement in November of last year of 2013, excuse me, was the city and county basically saying, the most we want to put into this is 1.3 million. One of the reasons-
I'm sorry, you dropped off your voice. The most-
That the most the city or county wanted to put into this project was 1.3.
It was how much?
1.3.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Bill.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
The reason for the floor is essentially, if we sell at anything less than $1.75 a square foot, we can't pay the, if we paid the real, we'd be, at 1.75, we can pay the realtor his fee and have about 1.4 from the sale, which cover, exceeds the estimated price of the facility.
Is it 1.3 each, for each city?
Yes.
But I thought there was something in there that if it, that the cities, they're locked. They're not putting a nickel more than 1.3.
That is accurate.
But there was something in there that if it goes more, we're on the hook. Is that right?
Yeah, and I think that really came about because there was discussion at one point of adding more space to the facility to house all the county records. And the city was really going down the road. If the county wants to do that, if the county wants to add things to the facility beyond that floor plan that was agreed upon, then the county is assuming the full cost for that addition, above and beyond. Is that, Kirsten helped light your agreement.
Yeah, the, the amount is set by that contract that this, that is the city's maximum contribution. I believe that what the concerns Bill brought up was the primary motivator for that. But it is true, if the asking price was low enough, that it would activate an obligation on our part. But I don't hear that price being anywhere near what we're talking about today. So.
Commissioner Barth?
I would just comment also in regards to Commissioner Kelly's comment, that if a price was offered too low, we just don't have to take it.
Right. We just don't sell. Are there any other comments? Otherwise, I'd look for a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution from the museum board. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution that I just read a minute ago. Any more comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Go sell us some land, Doug.
Item number 18 would be an update and status report of the 90th legislative session on bills that impact Minnehaha County. It's Mr. Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners, Robert Wilson. One of the items that we will bring to you at each commission meeting over the next two months is an update on the work of the legislature and bills that the legislature is considering that could impact Minnehaha County either positively or negatively, or in some, some ways, it might be considered a wash. Session officially opens this afternoon at noon, so I don't have a whole lot of bills to bring to you at this point. There are a couple of prefiled bills that I want to bring to your attention. A couple of them are some rather high-profile legislative packages- A couple of them are some rather high-profile legislative packages that you're probably aware of, and then there's one bill that we want to mention that we're keeping our eye on, and this will be a pretty quick briefing. The first one is Senate Bill 1, and this is the overall highway package that was looked at through a summer study. It's been, been worked on for a couple of, couple of years now. They've had a number of different stakeholder involvements leading up to this, and it's, overall, it's the bill that's being described as an overall $100 million package that would improve roadways, bridges, on the, the public infrastructure all the way across the state. And this would be funded through a variety of increases in motor vehicle excise taxes, fuel taxes, registration fees, and real taxes, and again, there are a number of different components of this bill. Some components have, appear to have more support than others. This is going to be a bill that I have no doubt evolves and charts a few different courses as it moves through the legislative session. We'll keep our eye on it. Senate Bill 2 is another one that you've probably also heard of as well, that would create nine river basin natural resource districts across the state, and really would focus on drainage issues, and would, would create an additional framework and structure and subunit of the state of South Dakota, subunit of government, to deal with these issues in each of these, these nine districts. They would be, there would be elected boards that are, that manage and operate the districts, and they would have staff as working for these, these boards, and that, again, that's a rather major piece of legislation that will, will probably take quite a journey over the next, next couple of months. The one, one bill with a specific county interest at this point I wanted to mention to you is House Bill 1020, an act to revise the mailing fees for non-commercial vehicle plates and decals. And what this bill does is for individuals, vehicle owners who renew property, excuse me, vehicle tags through county treasurer's offices and plates through vehicle, through county treasurer's offices, allows those, those county offices to charge a dollar for the tags and $5 for the plates for postage and handling mailing fees. And the, where the vehicle, plates and tags that are registered through the Department of Motor Vehicles are, do not include that fee.
I was thinking, don't they currently include a 50 cent fee per tab?
There is a, there is a current fee.
Pam, is there a fee on it? Yes.
I would refer to Pam on, Pam Nelson, treasurer on that one. The, what I'm hearing of the, some level of concern on this bill is that tags and plates that are renewed directly through Department of Motor Vehicles will not include that, that postage and handling fee of a dollar or $5 respectively. And that fee, the cost of postage and handling mailing them, the ones that came, come from the department, would come out of the license plate revolving fund. Currently, that is a fund that at the end of each year, whatever balance is left in it, is rolled over into the local government highway and bridge fund. So the, the concern is that there, there could be a downhill effect of fewer dollars coming to county, county road and bridge infrastructure. I've heard that some of these concerns late yesterday afternoon, spoke with the treasurer, spoke with Shannon Schultz over the highway department and the auditor's office, as well as our association about this bill. All are aware of the concerns, and it's something that we're going to continue to watch over the course of the session, and I know that the association is talking to some of the sponsors and some of the key players and looking to maybe make some little adjustments. So, that's all I have for you. Again, Treasurer Pam Nelson may have some additional comments that she wanted to share with you regarding this bill.
Did you have comments, Pam?
Well, I'm unanimously the director of the community, or opposed to this, because there's no question that it's going to impact the funding for the county and the city. The postage money's going to have to come out of somewhere, and it's currently coming out of people's pockets instead of, on an individual basis, on a cause, cause or basis, and it will be shifted to, and the money, the only place they can go is to the revolving fund. In the end, when the revolving funding, it has to, by statute, be kept at a certain level, I think it's $5 million, and once it's there, then, when that money's not there, then it comes out of the revolving fund, and that's ultimately road and bridge money. So, I don't think this bill is a particularly good idea. I don't think any treasurer does, county certainly shouldn't. And I think we have to be fairly proactive about it, because, and I think it runs contrary to what they're proposing to do in Senate Bill 1, which is raising money, to have more money for roads and bridges and stuff, and this only takes it away, so.
That's typical.
I'm not sure how funny, I'm not sure how much support there will really be for this legislation, and the other thing that treasurers and I found a little offensive is that we discussed these issues at our state convention with the new director and her assistant, and they said that we could talk about, and we raised our concerns, and she said, well, we'll talk about it at the spring workshop. Well, the spring workshop's in May, and she introduces a bill that's going to be dealt with and resolve the issue before we even get the chance. We also appointed a task force, which she's never called to meet yet, to discuss and offer a recommendation towards the association and as to what direction we should be going, and she chose not to do that either, so I'd say she's made some powerful enemies.
Any other questions for Pam? Okay, thank you, Pam. Robert, any more?
Item
Do you have any more, Robert? Yeah, okay.
Item number 19 would be Minnehaha County Commissioner Leazon reports, any commissioners?
Are there any reports? Is there any new business? Is there any old business? Commissioner Barth?
I just would like to comment, you know, earlier we had a citizen come forward talking about alcohol tax, that's why I'm doing this under old business, but the fact is, earlier today, we had a building committee looking at jail construction, which is, you know, going to cost us tens of millions of dollars, and the fact is, many of those costs are related to the abuse of alcohol, and alcohol currently is not paying us anything. Property taxes at your home, at your business are what is paying for these jail costs, and I guess I'm very impressed that it's gotten to the point where citizens themselves are, are bringing up this issue. I know that there is some media attention out West River, where a state senator even suggested support for some additional alcohol tax, and the time has come where we need to take action. Tens of millions of dollars are going to have to be raised from your property for jail expansion without any, without any other source of income, and so I thank them for coming forward.
Any other old business? Look for a motion to adjourn into executive session for personnel and litigation.
That's my motion.
Then a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Meeting adjourned.